So, welcome to the studio.
Thank you.
This is Community Television. I'm with Nora Kent, who is running for West County Commissioner. I guess it's position number one. And the current incumbent is Jay Bozavich. So, welcome to CTV.
Thank you so much for having me today.
So, you're telling me this is your first interview like this in this campaign?
Yes, yes.
So, don't worry about it. You know, forget that the audience is out there. We're just gonna talk a little bit about who you are, why you're running, what the issues are as far as you're concerned, and we'll go from there. So, for starters, where did you come from? Where'd you grow up? You know, school, that kind of stuff?
Okay, well, I grew up mostly in California.
Well, that's a big place, so north-south.
Yes, in the Bay Area. I went, I graduated from Harbor High School in Santa Cruz, and I attended UC Santa Cruz. And then I ended up getting my bachelor's degree at San Francisco State in education. And then, when I got married, we decided that we would move up to Oregon. We actually, at the time, Tom McCall was the governor, and we just admired so much that was going on in Oregon, and we wanted to be part of it.
So, an early refugee from California.
Yes, not, yes.
So, okay, and I assume you worked or have kids or something like that?
Yep. I raised my kids here in the River Road area. They all attended the public schools out in that area. And I've always, you know, I've had a teaching credential and a teaching background. I've been an educator at LCC for the last 25 years, and I...
So, what are you, what are you teaching?
I teach in the Adult Basics and Secundary Ed Department. And that's a big umbrella for helping folks with getting their, preparing for their GED, upgrading skills so they can go into college. And I also work with English language learners. And all of these folks were, I'm the point of entry for folks to get on with their, you know, either a job or entry into college.
Yeah. I guess these days, it seems as though there needs to be a lot more of the remedial stuff than there was a few years back. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, we've got folks coming into our program that graduated from high school, or, and some of them have graduated from high school and some of them have not. And I'm not, I think, there's just not been the support for the schools and the families. So, you know, you've got these struggling families that are barely able to just keep it together.
Yeah.
They're not focused enough on their children's education just because they're barely getting by, and so...
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen this country change a lot since, since I grew up in the '50s and, you know, at a time when one paycheck would give you a pretty comfortable life.
Right.
And so, that's changed a lot, and, you know, a lot of people are struggling.
They are.
So, we also, of course, it goes a little further with, say, the homelessness thing. So, any thoughts on homelessness and what's going on with that?
Well, we need to have a housing-first approach. We need to put people in homes.
Yeah.
And, you know, if people aren't having their basic needs met, like a place to live, you can certainly not expect your, the children to do well in school, so...
Yeah, I was sort of involved with all the Occupy stuff, and I started initially just kind of coming down and filming the thing occasionally, and then wound up hanging out there. But when the city council gave them a camping van exemption for the protest, we got descended upon by about 300 homeless people, and it became, so folks were sort of sensitized to that issue, you know? It's sort of been aware of it, but not, not to the extent that it was, it was happening. And so, I guess, there's an estimate that there's probably around 10,000 homeless in the area, of which there's more than 2,000 children in the school system.
Right.
Which is, I mean, how do we deal with that? Or do we?
Well, we, we need to deal with it.
Yeah.
And, and you're right, with the children, the children are affected. Initially, when I started, when I filed for this candidacy, I asked the local education association to endorse me, and they said, "Well, we don't endorse commissioners because it's, you know, they don't directly affect our funding." And then they went back to the drawing table and thought about it.
Yeah.
And I, and of course, you know, there are things that the commissioners do that can affect their families, you know, education, I mean, you know, housing and jobs and healthcare, the impact of the families. So, you know, we've got to start with these basic needs, and I would work with, with all the, you know, have a task force, do whatever we can do to get homes for folks. We can have multi, we need to incentivize the developers to build multi-unit housing and...
Well, that's, that's still at a pretty high level.
Right.
I mean, in the sense if you've got...
And then we have temporary, we need temporary housing, too.
Yeah. So, if you've got 10,000 people that you have to house, I mean, that's, that's a significant, you know, number for a community of this nature.
Right.
There's kind of the, 'cause I sort of, well, you know, we'll go all the way. I kind of got exiled from the group for suggesting, there's like several levels you can do it. If you, if you buy them all a mansion, you know, then you can buy them all a house, then you can pay the rent on someplace, then you could, you know, do a camp of tiny homes.
Yes.
Then you could go down and at least have a tent city, kind of arrangement to get them, you know, out of the parks and, you know, and the rest of the thing to where they can, you can at least set up a shower and food and, you know, services and do that kind of thing. So, I was kind of at the, you know, if we were doing sort of tent farms, you know, tent camps, where you sort of do a tent inside a tent, which is what most of, if you look at the rest stop thing happens.
The rest stops are great, yeah.
They put up these tarps, and then they have, you know, the tents under the tarps. So, I was suggesting we could find some land, put, put up some greenhouses, because there's a huge market for those materials. They're easy to construct, and they're inexpensive. And you could probably do, you know, for $500 per person, or less, considerably less, you could, you know, that's five, $500 per person, 10,000 people is $5 million, okay? So, you've got to be kind of down below that thing. Well, people were offended by, by the fact that I wasn't suggesting the $5,000 to $10,000 per person, which is the $50 to $100 million solution.
Right, right.
Because we simply couldn't raise the resources to do that. And so, that was the sort of opportunity village model.
Right.
And, but, you know, that's a sizable thing. So, housing first, you know, at least giving them a place where they're not being told to move on and get out of doorways.
Exactly, exactly.
They're not being given, you know, criminal trespass twos for sleeping on private property or camping van violation for sleeping on public property, for fines that they don't have the money to pay, so now we criminalize them. So, any thoughts around all of that? I mean, at what level do we get them into the system? Or do we provide a base for them to exist?
Well, I agree with you, John. We can start there. We can start, I like that idea of the greenhouses, because you're right, we've got grants out there now to...
Yeah.
Get those greenhouses. And who knows, maybe under the greenhouse, there might, you could actually grow a little food among the tents.
Well, you could, you could do something like that. But again, you know, if you've got an inside thing, you want to at least, you know, trench to put in utilities, so there's a toilet and a shower and a laundry. You know, that sort of moves them up at least to the next level where they're presentable enough to get a job.
Exactly. We've got to start there. They have to be able to take a shower and be able to be clean enough, because they won't...
And the sanity, you know, once they're off the streets and they're allowed to sleep, the sanity level kind of goes up, you know? But, but if what you're doing is you're not, you're interfering with them being able to sleep, you know, you're really, you're making the problem much harder to solve.
Oh, yeah.
So...
We're all that way. We all become kind of crazy if we don't sleep. I mean, that's normal.
It's true, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but that's, that's going back to that. So, what other issues do you see sort of going on where you would be different, say, from, from Jay, the way Jay's been handling things?
Well, I, one of the things that I see that we need to do, and this goes back, this would affect the housing, this would affect many aspects of Lane County. So, we need to streamline our building permits, codes. We need to fix our land use and make them more transparent and easy to navigate. One of the, the things I hear from developers, that they hate working with Lane County buildings. And so, we need to make this, make it more attractive. And if we can get the developers in, and, and then they're paying property taxes, then we can fund some of the other things that we would like to fund. Because what I'm constantly hearing is that, you know, that the state has given us an unfunded mandate. Well, let's figure out a way to fund it.
Yeah. Yeah, the, I guess the issue of development, there's sort of a lot of people who are completely anti-development. I mean, developers are, you know, the great Satan.
Right, right.
They're Darth Vader. And unfortunately, we are developing the planet, and as, as the population grows, again, there's lots of people, a lot of those same people are anti-development or, say, pro-immigration.
Right.
Which means now you're gonna move more people into an area that you don't have housing for. So, what's the...
We need, we need to, we need to focus on urban density.
Yeah.
Building these multi-unit structures that I talked about. Allowing, making it easier for people to have these accessory development units, you know...
You mean the extra, the mini-house in the backyard?
The mini-house in the backyard.
Backyard, yeah.
Waive those system development fees so they can, they can do that. And that would help our aging population greatly, and it would give a chance, it would give housing to a young family. So, yeah, we don't need to focus on, you know, we don't want to necessarily like go expand the urban growth boundary and build McMansions. What we want to do is, is do something that's sensible and house the lower-income people.
Yeah. So, I guess the, you know, if you look at this last election, I mean, you had, you had Bernie and who was sort of talking about working, the issues of working people, and to a far lesser degree Hillary, although she did pick up some of his rhetoric later in the campaign.
Yeah.
But we've, we've got this sort of thing going on, say, even at the national, you at the national level, you get the state level, you get the county level. Lot less, at a certain level, you get more leverage, closer you get to local, and, but at the same time, you have less. So, because you can't impact, say, employment or those kinds of things. So, it's constrained. Do you see a way around any of the constraints that are there?
The constraints, so I'm, I'm a big supporter of the living wage, and I have SEIU, SEIU, SCU.
Okay.
And AFSC have both come out and endorsed me.
Yeah.
So, because I would at least work, you know, we've got county workers and service workers that need to be treated fairly. And so, how can, so how can, at the county level, we can do that, we can at least acknowledge, not do things like my opponent has done, is to threaten to sue the state over sick, the mandates to have sick leave.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, we can, we can work at some level to uphold the state mandates, you know, to, to support folks in, with their benefits and their living wages.
But that gives you, gets you back to the question of, say, the ratio of private jobs to, say, government jobs.
Right.
Because if you've got private jobs, what they're doing is they're producing something that's a tangible value that can be sold elsewhere in the marketplace. So, what happens is if we want to, you know, import resources in, like, you know, oil and, you know, gasoline and, you know, whatever we need for building construction, then we need something to send out in order to trade, trade for that.
Right.
In the, in the area.
So, we have to support those small businesses in the area that, and that's where the biggest growth is right now, our small businesses, and, I mean, as far, and employment, too.
But, but again, you get things like, there's a lot of people here who are strictly anti-development.
Right.
Well, if you do anti-development, you got less jobs.
Right.
So, less jobs means that you're not producing stuff of value that people are gonna consume, which means that that depresses your economy and you have other problems.
Right.
So, we have this sort of larger thing about, we have to be producing something.
Right.
So, how do we do that?
Well, we, I'm not anti-development. I'm anti-development, big developers finding loopholes for the urban, you know, to work outside of the urban growth boundary. No, we need to keep producing. We need to support these small businesses, these cottage industries, because some of the box, you know, businesses are not making it. But the cottage industries are really going up.
Yeah.
And we can, we need to support that, and...
So, how do we do that?
We, again...
See, there's, there's a tough question for you.
I know, it is. Again, I think we go back to fixing our, our building codes and our land use, because we want, that's, that is the only place that Lane County gets money from, is property taxes. So, we want property taxes.
Yeah.
And we want tourism, too. And I've talked to Travel Lane County about some of the things they're doing, so we want to encourage that.
Okay.
Agri-tourism, too.
Yeah. So, we've got, I guess there's, there's issue, we started out, I think, talking about education.
Right.
Okay. How do we, there's a lot of people who are not particularly happy with, with what's going on with education, and how do we go about improving that? You know, what are the issues and how do we move past that?
Well, we have to first start with supporting the families.
Yeah.
And bringing the family, you know, it's like that old Maslow's ladder, you know? You've got to meet people's basic needs first.
Yeah.
And then you can help them develop a higher level of thinking. And, and let them know, let, I think, what, I work with disaffected and marginalized students, and I've been doing that for the last 25 years. But I get them, I register them to vote, I teach them about the, the current issues, I teach them, I encourage them to write to their congresspeople, and they've even shown me how you can text them. And then they go home and they tell their families.
Yeah.
And I think this is what we need, you know, that's education at a, you know, and I've been, I've taken part in community education. I went ahead and I had, I had a dreadful thing happen last year. Two of my students were taken by ICE. And my dean and I looked at each other and said, "Well, what can we do?" And he said, "Well, we have a sanctuary policy at, you know, LCC has a sanctuary school policy." I said, "Yeah, we can share that." And we invited my immigrant students in, and we invited the community in, and we had food, and we had music, and we had sharing. I mean, it was just a wonderful event that the community all attended. And I think we need to have that kind of awareness in our community. So, we start with getting the community to be aware of our educational needs, too, you know, because people get discouraged and, and we just keep getting folks more involved. I'm a member of the, I'm so thrilled that I'm a member of the PTA at Sayusla Schools. In, in these small rural areas, you could have, you can be a community member. And that's what we need to do. We need to bring that kind of awareness and support in from the community, and then we can help our families.
Well, one of the big issues with families is the number of broken families.
Yes.
In the sense of, I mean, the divorce rate, you know, nationally is way over 50 percent. So, families, you know, are not staying together.
No, and that's, that's a huge problem.
And how do we get to the point where people work it out, you know?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
As opposed to, as opposed to having a lot of, you know, single-parent families.
Right. Wow. Well, I can tell you, what, there's an organization, I just went to the Boys and Girls Club, they're, they're nationwide. And in the rural communities, the community has to support them. They just, they were just opening a new building, and it was wonderful. And they talked about what the Boys and Girls Club does for these families. You know, they have a safe place and a meal, and they get homework help after school. These are the kinds of organizations that we can continue to support as a community to help. With regard to the families working it out, I mean, I think it goes back to the national, the whole issues that, that we have. Starting with, you know, poverty creates an extreme stress on families, so...
Well, I mean, it's interesting. You can listen to some speakers say, "Nobody needs to be, you know, in poverty in America. If you do three things, then you won't be in poverty. One is finish high school, second one is get a job, and the third one is don't have kids, you know, before you're married."
Right.
So, that's kind, you know, and I have to sort of agree with, you know, the kind of, a lot of people associate them with, you know, right wing. But I think those, those are, you know, sort of fundamental, obvious values that if people, people, you know, do, they're gonna be more successful.
They are.
Yet we have a lot of people who are just plain not doing that stuff.
No.
And they wind up in trouble.
Right.
And then there's, of course, you know, huge numbers of, for those people who actually do get married, you have huge numbers of divorces. I mean, in the society, we don't even teach people how to negotiate. I mean, if you look at other countries, for example, you haggle about price.
Right.
Okay? In America, you're trained to be a price ticker. You look at the price tag, you either pay the money or you leave the store.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, when you think about a relationship, there's give and take. And if people don't understand how to negotiate within a relationship, they're not gonna do so good.
No.
So, how do we get to the point where we can maybe fix some of the families, keep them from breaking, but not by forcing it?
Well, the opposite of forcing is supporting.
Yeah.
So, we need to support them. And I, and I agree with those three things that you're saying. And that's something the Boys and Girls Club, when I was there, talked about. I, well, I talked to the CEO afterwards, because I said, "I work with students, too, where it matters, if they can connect with that one person."
Yeah.
You know, and that's the same thing. And he said, "We're fighting generational poverty."
Yeah.
And that's what we need to work on together, you know, to fight genera, because there's this general discouragement, and, you know, then there's this cycle that keeps going.
Yeah.
But, and, you know, I'm proud to say that not all my students have been successful that have walked in the door, but many have. I mean, I've seen, I've helped, I, she went on and became quite successful. I had a woman come to me that had been in an abusive relationship. She had seven kids. I helped her, it didn't take too much help, because she was really bright. She got her G, I helped her finish her GED, get into college. She went on and got the Ford Family Foundation Scholarship, is now completing her master's at the U of O.
Okay.
So, there, we can have these success stories, one student at a time, but we need to keep supporting them.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of students have a problem, as soon as they go to college, they run up an enormous amount of debt.
Right.
Which then becomes a significant burden on the rest of their lives. And I guess another thing is just this whole question of the value of different degrees, in the sense that there's a lot of degrees that really don't give you much in the way of skills by the time you get out of, out of the school.
This is true.
As, you know, you have your STEM fields, your, you know, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Those will pay fairly well.
Right.
But the other things, you know, your gender studies, your ethnic studies.
Right.
Those degrees aren't going to, aren't gonna get you very much.
No.
So, how do we, how do we get people, for example, to look at things that are more productive in the workplace?
Well, I work for Lane Community College, and we have many one-year and two-year degrees that actually people come out of and, and get jobs, you know? Our energy management degree, our nursing degrees, our dental assistant degrees. So, I'm very proud to come from, work with, in fact, I know many people that have gotten a four-year degree and end up going to Lane Community College just to get a degree where they could get a job. So, there is a value in four-year degrees if you're family and you can afford those. And I think that's, you know, because you learn, you get educated about life. But as far as getting a job, we need, yeah, we need to help folks with that. And I mean, and sometimes my folks that come into my classroom have kind of unrealistic goals, considering where they come from. But after they've been with me for a while and we look at career idea, you know, different kinds of careers, they usually, you know, we can help guide them.
Yeah.
In, in that way, yeah.
So, I've sort of just keyed in, you know, questions, you know, based on, on things that have sort of come up. But any, any, what do you think are the issues that we need to be looking at in this particular race? And, you know, different perspective that would, you know, maybe move the county ahead? What do you think the issues are?
Well, I think we've, so we've talked about housing, and that's important. We also have health, health and care. We need accessible healthcare. Now, as a commissioner, we sit, we have a place on the Board of Public Health, and so, we have public health issues, you know, and they, that we need to address. And we need accessible, you know, I'm out in Florence and in Deadwood, we have no county services out there at all. So, I'm not quite sure how we're gonna do it, but we're gonna work with that, that public health folks. And they're, and, you know, I know, because I've worked with folks in, in Florence, there are special grants that you can write for rural communities. I'm gonna have them explore those grants. And, and there's wonderful opportunities, working with the communities, to do things. For example, right now, they're, they're building a new middle school or rebuild in Mapleton. So, they're taking some, a couple of those classrooms, and they're going to make them into a mental health clinic.
Okay.
So, they don't need to build a new building. We've got, we've got, we've got space. And these are the kind of creative problem-solving that some of these communities are doing.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's a huge issue that I hear from people. No mental health, very, very little addiction help in, in a time when there's an opioid crisis, so...
Well, one of the things that I thought is a good model, you're probably familiar with Occupy Medical.
Yes.
The bus...
Yes, yes.
You know, they, that...
That's an, yes, that's, I am familiar with that.
So, the point is, if, you know, if you don't have services out through the community, doesn't mean that you need physical plant everywhere.
No.
You could sort of, you know, bus it around.
Bus it around, yeah.
And, you know, do, do health clinics and that kind of thing for people who, you know, there's, there's still lots and lots of folks who are not on healthcare.
Right.
And, you know, even Obamacare, you know, for, if you're buying in the private market, was, was pretty prohibitively expensive.
Right.
For people at the bottom, you know, call it half of the economic, the economic ladder. So, what about stuff like that? Would the county, you know, do you think that that's an idea the county might, you know, these mobile services?
Yeah, I think that's excellent. And we've talked about that. There's a group in, that came out a couple of years ago, and I was happy to be on the brainstorming process, and they, they just took it, and they got this Ford Family Foundation. It's called Sayusla Vision 2025.
Okay.
And I believe that Cottage Grove now is doing their own visioning process. So, this includes our rural areas. Anyway, I remember some, that is on, healthcare is on their vision, and they have definitely discussed having mobile clinics. So, yes, I think the commissioners could definitely give a nod to that and support that, and we, and find, find ways to work and do, and meet people's needs. Because I know, one of the complaints I get out in, people tell me, as I'm traveling around and talking, they said, "You know, we feel like the, the poor stepsister or something out here, you know? We send our property taxes over there and we're not getting services back."
Yeah.
So, we want to see that. So, that's an excellent idea, and we, we need increased, and I, I help make calls, bring signs over for passing Measure 101 to place all over, and I, so that we can continue to get those federal funds to support our Oregon health plan. And that's, we need to keep working with that.
The, I mean, one of the things that people talk about is, is everybody's opposed to taxes.
Right.
But lots of people love the stuff that it gets spent on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, you have a couple, a couple ways to go. You know, you also have this balanced budget problem.
Right.
Income, income and expenditures. So, any areas currently in the county that you think cuts could be made without a reduction? You know, where are places where we could, you know, maybe save some money and apply it to other things?
Well, one of the areas, and the sheriff wouldn't be happy with me saying this, is in the jail, you know, we could hire jailers for half the price of sheriff deputies. Of course, we need some in there. And... And I am, so that would be one way to, to save some money. And then those, because what we have, I hear over and over again, and I know, we've got a cut to our, our patrols out there. When, 10 years ago, we had 56 sheriffs. Now we have 50 or 49 less. And I'm a member of the Neighborhood Watch. I was Neighborhood Watch when I lived over here too. And we, our former Commissioner Leener obtained a sheriff liaison with Neighborhood Watch groups. And that's the only way they can be effective, is if they can have that liaison. And that's gone away.
Yeah, because patrolling is just not going to do anything.
No, but the liaison is important.
Yeah. And, but again, you know, in terms of the jail, there's been a number of fairly sizable settlements for violence within the jail.
Right.
I mean, how do we, do we even acknowledge that that's happening? Do we fix it? How do we fix it? Those kinds of things.
Well, okay, I, I know of a big lawsuit that had to be settled for a wrongful death.
Yeah.
There was a man that was meant severely mentally ill, he had schizophrenia, and banged his head against the, a brick wall. And he was, it clearly broke his neck, was not handled like a neck injury. It was just thrown into a wheelchair and he ended up quadriplegic and, and then following year died. The county, the, the county had hired a for-profit healthcare provider.
Yeah.
And they ended up having to settle over $7 million. The county paid, well, I guess they settled with $400,000. So that's an example.
Oh, yeah. So, so how do we get past that? Where we have, for example, that's, that's probably tied in very tightly with the homeless problem.
Right.
In the sense that if you're using the jails, okay, as a solution to the homeless problem, what you're, what you're doing is you're taking a lot of either economically destitute people, or you're, you're taking in mentally ill people. I mean, we look back to the eighties when there was a need for reform within the mental health industry, yet the solution was just to shut it all down and throw them out on the streets.
Right.
So now what we have is, is the law enforcement and jail system handling these people who are, you know, many of them should be institutionalized.
Exactly.
So, you know, we have, there was a case that, that came up, and I, I was on the police commission for a while. And I sort of, you know, made some noise about that, for which a lot of people didn't like me anymore. But they basically threw someone in for 30 days into the, into the jail system. At the end of 30 days, she's still going to be homeless. At the end of 30 days, she's still going to be schizophrenic.
Right.
Okay? I mean, what was the point, you know, of that? And could we have solved the problem for less money, you know, in a better way?
I think so. I think we need, you know, when they closed those state hospitals and they threw people out into the community, the idea at that time was that there would be a, that the communities were going to make these respite areas. And there, we even had one open out for a while on 99, oh, I forgot the name of it. But it was a, it was an old motel that was transformed. And that's since has been closed down, I believe. But I think that was the only model of that kind.
Well, you have things like the Eugene Mission.
Right.
Which is problematic in that you have to get your dose of religion every day, or, you know, they backed off it for a while, but then, you know, it has sort of come back.
Right.
Because they're selling, they're selling their religion through this, through this particular process. You know, they are providing shelter and they need a lot of credit for having done that. That is, you know, that is admirable at every possible level.
Right.
But that's, it's a drop in the bucket. I mean, if you have 10,000 people, the mission, I think, peaked up at 600 beds. But it's, as far as I know, it's, it's down considerably.
Right.
I may be wrong about that, but I haven't followed it that closely recently.
So, yeah, we need these communities, the community respite areas for these folks. And they need, they need social workers and, you know, all of this kind of help because they're not, it's just, this, this idea of jailing people, I mean, this is like archaic. It's like Bedlam, you know? We're just, you know, putting, locking up mentally ill people. And they're not, and their, their needs just simply aren't met. A lot of them aren't getting the medications they need or the proper nutrition, you know, to.
Well, again, when you have someone, you know, who's schizophrenic, I have a very close friend whose daughter, I've met her a few times, she's very, very nice. But she is schizophrenic, and if she's not on her meds, she's psycho.
Right.
And the issue is, how do you compel? How do you convince these people to actually take the medications?
No, that's, that's a huge problem.
Yeah.
But it, and it, because if they start feeling better, then they want to get, then they feel like they don't need them anymore. No, and it, and it goes, that's a difficult cycle to break. The only way I've seen that work have some sort of success is if they also have therapy with.
Oh, yeah.
Because then they have an advocate that can talk with them and, and help them, you know, understand why it's important that they stay on the medication.
So, you know, one of the things that I looked at.
I'm a member of NAMI.
Oh.
I have a mentally ill son, so.
So you have some feelings for that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, it's, one of the things that I actually talked about, which didn't make me very popular with the police, was saying, okay, we've got this $55 million annual budget for Eugene Police.
Right.
Okay? If we took a couple million of that and we applied it to dealing with the homeless problem.
Right.
Would we wind up with a better solution? And, you know, I'm, I'm wondering, you know, what do you think there?
I, I think that's an awesome idea. I mean, there, I know that my opponent supports, he says, restorative justice. And I know a little bit about that. I have a Quaker background, and we had the restorative justice folks come to one of our meetings. But again, it goes back to that Maslow's ladder, you know? Start working with people at their basic needs in order for them to develop that higher thinking and carry out restorative justice. I think it's a beautiful idea, but we need to start making, and I, I think that's a, yeah, let's, let's, it is, we need to tackle the homeless problem, and then I think that will help, you know, alleviate some of our criminal problems.
See, in the United States, the, the city that's pretty much doing the best is Salt Lake City. And they've, they've adopted a, a housing first, first model.
Yeah.
And they've been quite successful at, you know, basically getting people off the streets. It's, it's an expensive model, but it does produce a, a better result. And I, I remember when Gabor Maté, the guy who is the doctor at the, it's a drug clinic in, in Vancouver, wrote his book, and I gave a copy to the police chief. It's, you know, if you did, the thing is that these folks are not going to get off drugs until they have a stable environment.
Right.
And then it's, it's like they're, they're medicating the fact that they're not in, you know, in a, in other words, they're medicating their existence so they don't have to experience it, shall we say?
Right, right.
And they don't improve until you get them off the streets and cleaned up.
That's true. That's so true, John. Great.
So, so other issues that you think may be facing the county? I mean, you've talked about the jails, we've talked about, you know, people feeling like they're not getting services for the taxes they're paying.
Right.
Those kinds of things.
And then we have folks that aren't, they want, they're very concerned about the aerial spraying, and that's been a big issue.
Oh, yeah, right.
Okay, and that's a public health issue. It's also, turns out, it's a, so we've got people becoming sick and are, and what, one of my endorsers and big donors is Mountain Rose Herbs.
Yeah.
And he's supporting me because he, he reminds me that we right now have about 15,000 folks in the sustainable food industry in Lain County. And then we have, we need, and then we have less than 3,000 working in the timber industry. So we need to balance the needs of our sustainable foods and need for having organic farms with doing the cheap herbicide.
Well, the, the thing that you get is, is the timber producers who are managing their, managing their land, don't want to hire people. They'll, they'll hire a helicopter to come in and spray everything.
Right.
But they don't want to hire people to clear out the undergrowth and do that kind of thing. Because the undergrowth sort of represents a, a valuable commodity. I mean, you can dry it out and you can burn it over at Seneca.
Right.
Instead of burning logs.
Right.
You know, I mean, Seneca promised, oh, we're only going to do slash. They burn logs. But the, the thing is that, that you could be hiring people to clear out this undergrowth rather than spraying.
Yes, exactly.
And so that comes down to fighting the fairly substantial money and interest that are, that are, you know, powerful money and interest that are the timber industry.
Right.
Because they're saying, hey, you know, we can save money by not employing people or by employing less people. So that's a jobs thing, which would get some more cash circulating in the society, probably take, you know, some people who are unemployed or underemployed and put them to work clearing out the slash. So thoughts around that?
Those are all great ideas. We need to employ people. And this is one way to do it. And I think, it's, you know, other, you know, Lincoln County did pass a, a ban on aerial spraying. And now they're fighting the courts. And I think that's, that's the logic that our current commissioners are using against supporting this or even placing an, you know, supporting the initiative that 15,000 people signed to make, put on the ballot, or even placed an advisory on the, on the ballot. Because they said, well, the state isn't supporting it. Well, my thinking is enough counties put it, you know?
Yeah.
You hear, the state, get behind this, the state will listen. And I heard Pete Sorenson said, he felt that this was, you know, we used to say we had to have field burning.
Yeah.
You know, remember that? When we first, I first moved from California, they were terrible pollution. And this is the way it's always been done, and this is the way we have to do it. And then we had a terrible, terrible accident on I-5, and we figured out another way to do it.
Yeah.
So I think we can figure out another way to do this and strike a balance with our sustainable food industry and as well as bringing jobs.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, so we've got, looking at, at hiring some people or, or changing the rules so that we get more people hired to deal with this.
And also, this kind of ties into with, you know, our bringing, to, you know, beauty, you know, keeping our, our forest sustainable ties into, well, of course, all the natural environment health and our tourism. I mean, how are we going to attract people to clear cut? And now we're talking about offshore, offshore oil drilling and this sort of thing, you know? We want to share this beautiful resources, this jewel that we have in Lain County. And not just, you know, clear cut it and send it off to another area.
Well, actually, a lot of it's, a lot of it's being shipped off to China.
Exactly.
You know, it's, it's resource extraction.
We're not even milling our logs here anymore, so.
Yeah.
Again, more jobs.
Well, I mean, milling also, there's, there's the whole food thing in, in the Willamette Valley. We, we are the grass seed capital of the universe in an area that, that we should be growing food. So there's, you know, like the Bean and Grain Project, and, you know, folks trying to reopen a mill so that we can actually do some of this stuff locally. But, okay, other, other issues that you think are important in, in this particular race and that the county needs to do a better job with?
Well, we need to do a better job of listening to the people in Lain County and supporting our democratic ideals. And that's why people are getting behind me. John, I didn't come up with the idea to run this race. My community came to me. And I'm part, I feel like I'm part of a movement that reflects out at the national, national level, you know, this is the Year of the Woman.
Yeah.
And people saw me out advocating, you know, doing fundraising for DACA, doing, organizing the Women's March, and just seeing how well I work with the community and with helping my students. So there's this, and they look to me for representational leadership. I don't know how many doors I've knocked on and people say, and who are you running against? Jay Bozovich. Oh, he's the guy that never returns my calls.
Yeah.
You know, so people want to be listened to. And one of my volunteer coordinators yesterday told me, I've, I've never seen, you know, and she's in the Democratic Club, she says, I've, we've not had a candidate with as much support as you're getting right now. And I know it's not about, all about me. It's about, it's a time for a change.
Yeah.
Every young woman I meet is so excited that I'm, that I'm a woman, that I'm going to represent women. And as I was reminded at the AFME, you know, most of the county workers are women, you know, and the majority of the county workers are women. And yet they're having to fight to have equal pay and for equal work.
Well, okay, so let's, let's talk about equal pay for equal work, because you're going to get an argument out of me for that. That's an equality of outcome thing, as in opposed to an equality of opportunity.
Right.
If you take the so-called wage gap and you correct for the types of degrees that are offered to employers.
Right.
Okay? Women as a group, not, there are exceptions everywhere, tend to go for non-STEM subjects, whereas your science, technology, engineering, mathematics pays more. Women tend to look for more flexible work hours. They look for safer working conditions. 12, 13 out of every 14 industrial accidents and deaths befall a man.
Right.
So we have, you know, you, you're looking for hourly flexibility, this and that, and that cuts into this, you know? If you start to correct for those choices that people make, is there a wage gap?
Well, there will be. And that's what we want to encourage.
Why is there, why will there be a wage gap if you correct for those choices that people have made? Okay? The choice of which fields you get into, the choice of how many hours you work and flexibility of hour, the choice of a whole series of things.
So we're talking at a whole national level right now, Joe.
Well, yeah, if you're talking, if you, if you bring up the wage gap, that's where you have to talk.
Right.
Because that, that national trend applies locally here also.
Yes, it does.
Okay? So it's, it's, and it's not just national, it's international. You have the same thing in England or Australia and Canada, where there's this claim that women are, are, are being paid less for the same work. And yet, even in these places where the, the employers have to publish the wages and have to publish the hours worked, once you, once you look at that, you find that there is no wage gap. So I'm wondering, you know, if we're talking about a wage gap, is there really a wage gap? Or is it an earnings gap based on how much they earn as opposed to how much they're paid? So any thoughts on that?
We're getting into the weeds. What I want to say is I'm, I support the, the county workers. And most of them are women.
Right.
And they went up, you know, against the commissioners and had to force a strike. And so that's the kind of things I'm concerned about, is that they get the pay, a pay increase that's commensurate with what the commissioners got.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that's a separate set of problems. I mean, commissioners paying themselves more than they're worth.
Right. And by the way, people have asked me about that, you know, and I, if I get this job, that pay increase that they got for 12%, I would donate that portion to Lain Community College for scholarship funds. Because I think we, it should be, at the end of the day, commissioners are also county workers.
Yeah.
So I believe in a little more equality there.
Okay. So, but again, you know, if you, if, if we're, you know, this is always a set of trade-offs.
Yeah.
Okay? People don't like to pay the taxes and they say, we're not getting enough services. And then if you're talking about increasing people's pay, that's, you know, going to mean more taxes. So what, what I'm looking at is the question of what is the value of what the county is providing to the taxpayers and, and out there? And how do we go about not only improving the perception that there's a value, but improving the actual value?
Right.
Okay? That's a tough one.
We know, and that's what we, it is, and that's what. And that's what I was saying, that the folks in West Lane County are definitely complaining about.
Yeah.
You know, they're not.
So, we know that.
Their services, service, well, so I would probably defer some of this to more expert, you know, advice.
Okay.
But, and, but I am aware of that. And we would have to have, but again, and we would go back to, I think if we, if we can increase our property, you know, we can get our developers, increase our property taxes, but also then be aware of, you know, dispersing these funds in the, in the right way.
So, I asked, I asked this before, any, and, and we sort of, you know, wandered on to another topic. But are there any areas where you think cuts could be made to save the, the budget?
Okay, so, well, we talked about the one area and, well, we need to be careful. One thing that our current folks do is they keep getting involved in lawsuits. And I don't want, that would be an area that I would want to not, not go into.
Yeah, good, good answer there. I think, yeah, I guess LeAnn Richardson was, was a problem a few years back.
Right, LeAnn Richardson, $10,000. And then we had the $89,000 for the, when Rob Handy sued them back, $400, $400,000 on the wrongful death suit. So, we've, we've had a few lawsuits. So, let's get rid of those.
Yeah, in other words, let's, let's start being reasonable.
Let's start being reasonable and not so litigious and just, and follow the rules. You know, that whole thing with LeAnn Richardson.
Yeah.
She was just pushed in without a, out a proper hiring process. And I'm, at Lane Community College, I've taken hiring practice training and been on hiring teams. And there's a reason that you do things in a proper manner so that you don't end up with that kind of mess.
Yes. I don't know, you know, now that I've got some white hair of what's left, you know, it is, it is, people in the past have figured things out. And reinventing the wheel doesn't always work. So, you know, just going back to sort of basic values may, may be a, a way to go.
Basic values and following the rules that we have and supporting those will, will help. And then we're not going to end up wasting taxpayers' money in that way. Okay, so what else do I, I've got?
Other, other issues? Well, you know, we, we talked a lot about, or a little bit about your history and, and, you know, how you came to this. And, and, you know, what sort of motivated you to decide? You talked about there were some folks who were supporting you.
Yeah.
But what really got you into this? I mean, usually, people will, will get into a race if they, if they, if they're unhappy about something. So, what is it that, that you just, that decided to motivate you to do this?
Well, I feel like I'm running for the people, not against one particular issue. But I'm running for the people. I've gone, in my current job, I've been advocating for my students for years. And I feel like this is taking this to a next level. I go the extra mile and I'll do whatever I can do to help people. And I, and I, for example, we recently, a couple of years ago, they changed the GED test. And they no longer offer the GED out in Florence. So, we had to come up with our own testing area. And people said, well, that's too expensive. So, I've done two things. I've written a grant so hopefully, hopefully, in the next, I wrote it a year and a half ago, hopefully, we're going to be having a site there. And I've literally borrowed the LCC van and driven students to test in Coos Bay and in Eugene. Because that's the kind of person I am. If there's something that needs to get done, I'll do it. And whatever way we need, you know, to support people. So, that's why, and that's what people have convinced me of. You can make a difference, LeAnn, Nora, out there, you know? And so, I'm, I started thinking about it. Yeah, I've been fighting, I've had a life of service and advocacy. And so, I just want to take that to the next level.
So, we got about another, got about another three minutes.
Okay.
So, I mean, I could pick up another, I could pick another topic or is there something you want to jump on?
Well, I just want to say that, again, people are ready for a change.
Yeah.
They want representational leadership. I've been recently endorsed by Peter DeFazio because he sees me carrying the standard for Democrat values and democracy values, you know?
Big D, small d, huh?
Yes, exactly. And, and I, and I represent people. I want to protect the environment as much as we can, you know, in our, as well as, so we support small businesses, we support our, our people. And we'll, I think together, we can do this. I really am, I have a lot of experience with bringing folks from opposing views together and building consensus. And I, I think we can do this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Building consensus.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's see. I've got a couple more minutes. I guess you brought up, so again, we have a little bit of a contradiction. You brought the DACA thing.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, I think that the kids who got raised here and have sort of lived here for, you know, most of their lives.
Right.
That's a group that we have to, have to bring in. But what about immigration in general? I mean, this is an area that's not seeing that much firsthand immigration. But what do you think about, about our borders? Is open borders a good idea or should we be maybe vetting people a little better as they come in?
Joe, this is not an area that the commissioners really will have a lot to concern. But we do, I will support sanctuary and I work with, I work with immigrants in my, in my classroom.
Okay.
They are the hardest working people I've ever had. None of them, I know, I mean, maybe there are out there, none of them receive social services. They all work two or three jobs. They're family-oriented people. I think they have a lot to teach the rest of us, actually.
They do stay together as families. I do, you know, when you, when you go to the parks and you look at the family having their cookout and, and the father kicking a soccer ball with the kids, okay, that's something that you see from immigrants and a lot less from, from traditional Americans.
That's right.
So, I'm in agreement with you on a lot of that kind of stuff. But it does come down to the question of jobs. So.
Well, you know what I tell my.
The more people we bring in.
That's right. And we have, you know what I tell my students that have actually complained to me about immigrants taking their jobs at McDonald's? Go get an education. The immigrants can't get an education, but you can.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, yes. So, in other words, get your button gear.
Right.
So, I think that that's, that's probably a good message to end this at.
Okay.
And I, and I am absolutely in favor of that. A lot of people spend a lot of time complaining, the solution is get your button gear.
Right.
So, yeah, I guess you probably have a website for your campaign?
Yeah, noracant.org.
Noracant.org. So, if you're interested in, in supporting Nora, there is an election on May 15th.
May 15th, coming right up. And we're, and we've had, over 5,000 doors have been knocked on already.
And I want to thank you very much for the conversation.
Thank you so much, Joe.
It was, it was a good conversation. And good luck in the election.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Really appreciate you bringing me here.
Okay.